See, all right, everyone. Hey, thanks for showing up. And this is the planning board meeting for the town of Newbury for the first of December 2021. Happy December, guys. So as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy?
Yes.
Larry George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews?
Les, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Hey, Leslie. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Thanks, Woody. And Mary Stone?
Yes.
Great. Staff, Town Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the firm of Martha Taylor.
Yes.
All right, anticipated speakers on tonight's agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Tom Zee?
Here.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. This is December 1st, 2020, open meeting of the Planning, Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consisting with the Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency would extend, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order of suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL Chapter 30, A Section 20 until April 1, 22. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all members in publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website. And which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering the meeting ID number, which is 832-7141-3056. Or by calling 1-929-2056099 and entering the media ID number one prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. Meeting is also being broadcasted live through a local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tnct.org. And recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. While meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review, applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak. And if needed, share some information to the screen, please state your intention after you've been recognized. So here are ground rules, which are similar ground rules in the past. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to convey some of our ground rules for clear and effective conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Our Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I'll go down a list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with the star six to toggle to mute and unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or headphones with cell phones or tablets. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants could see you and that you should take care not to screenshot your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through me. I take care to write myself if you wish to speak. We will not be having a public hearing tonight. Okay. If we do have any public questions, we will use a comments, we will use a raise hand function that can be done by, for our video participants to raise your hand hover on the bottom of the Zoom window below the photograph and click with the with the gray hand that appears, please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. Then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order which they listed, which is determined by the order in which they click on the raise hand function. Each participant when called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask questions or make comments. I will afford the applicant to participate in orders, his or her representatives, the opportunity to reply, your handle lower. When you're given the floor for your questions, I will then continue down a list of those in the raised hand column and afford the participant applicant or representatives to an opportunity to speak. Should there be physical electronic submission of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. So for tonight, each vote taken for this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. All right. That takes care of that. And let's move over to our agenda. So first item on our agenda is all business, a follow-up discussion of the draft legal documents for 15 Coleman Road Fieldstone Lane OSRD. The Declaration of Restricted Covenants and Easements, a declaration for LLC for the establishment of Fields of Land Homeowners Association. Martha, these were submitted to the board members this afternoon. Do you want to make any comment? Because I know they were reviewed by council.
Right. So the board had requested that that they be reviewed by council, and I did get comments back from Attorney Winner this afternoon, which I forwarded on to the board members and also to to Tom. It appears that most of them were really were sort of, you know, clarifications or enhancements. There didn't seem to be anything that was, you know, particularly substantive. The one outstanding item really relates to the discussion about the witch stone that was started at previous meetings and who will be responsible for that. And as Attorney Winner noted, the documents will need to be revisited once that a determination has been made on how that will be handled.
So let's talk for a couple of seconds about that if we could. Did council give any guidance with regard to whether it had to go to town meeting or whether it could be handled internally with a commission or committee?
So we talked, we talked briefly about the three options that had been discussed at the meeting. One, having be the responsibility of the owner of lot seven, since that's, it forms the boundary, one of the boundaries of that lot. The second option that had been discussed was having it be the responsibility of the homeowners up association. And the third was the possibility of carving out some area containing the witch stone to be deeded to the town. In sort of talking through those options, it seems, you know, it seems like the most, since this is basically a town, sort of a town asset, a historic asset. The best way might be to actually have it deeded to the town. Because assigning either a homeowner, the responsibility or the homeowners association, the responsibility, you know, should something, you know, unfortunate happen. There's, there's, you know, either the house is abandoned, there's no owner there, something happens or the HOA, something happens with that. You know, there's some risk involved. So with the, the option of dating it to the town, you know, the question came up of whether that would actually need to go to town meeting to have the town accept it. But in most general law, under chapter 40D, section eight, or I'm sorry, chapter 40, section 8D. Which pertains to the historical commission, there is a provision at the end of that saying that the commission may acquire in the name of the town or city by gift purchase, grant, bequest, device, lease, or otherwise, the fee or lesser interest in real or personal property of significant historical value and may manage the same. So that that indicates the town meeting approval would not be required, but obviously we'd have to have a conversation with the historical commission.
So we would start the conversation with the historical commission. And if they had the interest in assuming the management or responsibility, then we could go forward with having the town be responsible for and then take ownership of the father stone.
Right, right.
All right, let me just run by board members and see how they feel about that scenario. Larry, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I know. I think of the options presented, that's the best. Anything else? And we run the risk of losing control of it, frankly.
Okay, thank you. George, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I feel the same way. There's a certainly a risk factor of having some damage done to personal things. And I think the best place to be is for the Conservation Commission to a town. Essentially, the town would be behind the Conservation Commission with legal insurance.
The Historical Commission.
Historical, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yep, I do it all the time, George.
Happens every day.
Okay, great. Leslie, your thoughts?
I just want to know what the square footage of the surrounding area of the stone would be. I, I agree that it should remain in the possession of the town. In the event that is the it, it, the house, it, the property is not lived in or can, if, if the property is the takes care of the stone, do they have full say of what's going on? I think it being a historical piece, it should remain in in town custody.
Okay, cool. We'll figure out the dimensions, I think, after we go through this question. But I appreciate that question, that question, Leslie. Let me just continue with polling. Woody, what are your thoughts on the options there?
I agree with basically what everyone said that it, if it could go to the town, that would be the best stewardship.
Okay.
With the commission.
Okay, cool. Mary, your thoughts?
I agree with Woody about the historical aspect, and I think that this is what makes this area so terrific. Is the preservation of history, no matter what it takes. And it's great when when contractors are willing to work with us. So I'm in favor of the.
All right. That being the case, Martha, would you like this in the form of a motion to direct you to contact Conservation Commission to start the discussion?
In the Historical Commission.
Thanks, George. All right. Let's all on the same page. Historical Commission, yes, we're there. Historical, historical.
Yes, I think probably it would be good to to do it in the form of a motion.
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to direct the father stone for the Historical Commission.
So we'll direct Town Staff to contact the Circle Commission to initiate discussion. Okay, good. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, on the motion, any discussion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
No.
Question, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
None.
Discussion, Mary? Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How do you feel?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, I'm on board as well. Thanks very much. Martha, there you go.
Excuse me, Peter, for a second.
Yes, yes.
Or Martha, would it make it worthwhile to talk with our town manager concerning the liability to make sure that that would well be covered?
Yes.
The mission.
Yeah, no, I think it would be, yes, very wise to talk with her as well.
I think to be prudent to do that.
Thank you, George. I always love the attorney spin. It's the best. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Let me see what is next on our agenda. So as far as the declarations, they're going to probably have to kind of wait until we get the father stone issue worked out. Is that what I'm hearing from recommendation from counsel, Martha?
Well, there is some language that would need to be either incorporated in that or not, depending on the outcome of this issue. So
Okay.
I think, and I don't know if Tom also needs to review the suggested edits with his counsel. And I know that Six County Greenbelt also had one suggested edit, which Tom has, and I don't know if that's been incorporated or not. So
Okay, let me ask a question, Martha. When does the Conservation, when does the Historical Commission meet next?
Actually, if you can bear with me for one second, I think I can send you that. No, sorry, that was an older thing. They usually meet maybe the second Thursday of the month, but I can verify that.
And that will have to get on their agenda?
Probably what I'll do is I'll reach out to the Chair and the Secretary to start the conversation and see if that can get on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, cool. Tom, I see you raising your hand, sir.
Yeah, if, if, thanks very much, Peter. Just a quick comment. First of all, I think you all know that if I didn't, if I didn't propose this, I certainly supported the idea of, you know, carving out a piece of property here, whether that's, in fact, I already instructed my surveyor to prepare an ANR plan with with details to be, to be determined. I was thinking a 20 foot wide by 10 foot deep piece that allows equipment and enough room around the stone to be accessed, to be maintained, to be you know, accessed with equipment if necessary, if somebody wants to move it or anything like that. So you know, my, my concern as I've expressed many times is really the timing of things and, and leaving this, this open ended, is there a way that we can that we can, you know, wrap up these, these, these documents with a, with a, with a clause, you know, or wording in that, in that paragraph, that's all encompassing. And allows, allows us to move forward with our business. You know, I mean, I rather than having to wait, I don't know how many meetings and how many other returns we need to have. You know, we're in a very cooperative environment. We all want the same thing. You know, we're, we're constantly battling the clock.
Sure. I appreciate that, Tom, and sensitive to it. With, you know, any, any, any applicant developer, we understand time, time constraints and and putting all the pieces in place to try to get it all together. With that said, I think if the town is going to be assuming this, which looks like that's what the direction we're going in, we have to do the mechanism that that will facilitate that. So we have to go to the Historical Commission. They're going to have to, you know, see what their position is on that. And I would think I don't want to speak for another board, but we, we are a town that does treasure our heritage. So that might be able to be concluded in hopefully not a long period of time, but I can't tell you how long that would be. From what council has said, we, I think the documents are going to need to be revisited after the ownership of the father stone is determined. So if, if in fact, the Historical Commission meets on the second Thursday of the month, which would be next Thursday. And if we can get it on their agenda, which I would hope we would be able to, just to get, have to get it 48 hours beforehand, then or it would be placed, is that right, Martha, 48 hours?
It needs to be posted 48 hours. I'm not quite sure when they need their agenda items.
And so hopefully that could be discussed and they could have an opportunity to then respond to it to then direct this board as to what it should do. It's better than going to town meeting, I think.
I understand and I appreciate anything that you all collectively can do to, to help see, see the process through. I appreciate it very much. I think you know that.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Good. Okay, so Martha has much in order to do that. So regards to, and that's going to probably require, I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to review the documents that came out today. I know that I didn't have an opportunity to do a significant drill down on them. And I'm not sure if anyone else did work schedules. And were the comments from Rebuild Incorporated Martha into Brian's? Or did we not receive those?
That was a separate email. So I think it was actually not. It was, it was one minor comment.
Okay.
So I think it was actually not in the draft that he was working with.
Okay. And, okay, so I would encourage everyone to have the opportunity to review that. And Martha, if we can try to have that conversation, just so we can keep Tom and his project, just like every other project in the forward momentum, I think that'd be appropriate. Any, any board members have any questions or concerns or comments from, with that, with regards to that?
No.
Okay. Then I think that takes care of 15 Coleman on, for the item agenda of the declaration and the homeowners. I know that Martha, was there other stuff that was going on with one and eight?
Yes, Tom had made the request to for the board to release lots one and eight. And that is not on tonight's agenda, but the board had had essentially tabled that until the the shared subject system was constructed.
Okay, so it's been constructed, but there isn't a certificate of compliance yet?
That's my understanding from our health director. It's been constructed. Final inspection was done. She's waiting for the as-built and then assuming everything is in order, certificate of compliance can be issued.
Okay. Okay. So hopefully that would be short order. Short order activity. Okay. So Tom, I think one and eight could be in the pipeline on our next agenda. If it falls good and realistically, it might be another additional two weeks to get the documents if all goes well with historical. So we'll see how those conversations proceed.
Okay, and if, for what it's worth, I did have a chance to look over the suggested revisions and I consider them to be refinements rather than changes. I categorize them and I'm fine with what's been proposed.
Perfect. Well, that makes it easy. Great. Yeah, very good done. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Tom.
Good night. Bye bye.
Um, okay, so next on our dinner is basically a follow-up discussion regarding our proposed zoning for this town meeting. So Martha, can you just screen share the, the, the schedule? Just so everybody has kind of a feel for what it would take for us to get something up and functional for this, for the
Are you able to see that?
That is perfect.
All right. Do you want me to make it a little bigger?
No, well, sure, that's always good for old eyes here.
Let's see if I can. So how's that?
Do you want to just take it real quick?
So the word from Tracy was that, well, the town meeting is going to be held on April 26. So that's a typical timeframe in order to, the articles are, any articles, warrant articles are due to the select board by January 7th, I'm sorry, February 7th. And she suggested that they be in as complete draft form as possible. So in order to make that schedule, the, the planning board would essentially have to submit the well, vote on the second of February to refer the zoning amendments, whatever proposed zoning amendments there are to the select board and vote to set a public hearing date. Contingent on select board referral back to the board. And then they would get submitted to the select board the next day. I do have an asterisk here because in order to get, get on the select board's agenda for February 8th, the request to be on the agenda would actually have to be made on the first. So that would just sort of be made, you know, conditional on the board voting to move these things forward. Then within 14 days, the select board has to vote to refer the amendments back to the planning board for public hearing. And we would then target a public hearing date of March 2nd. So the first newspaper notice would be, need to be in the paper on February 14th. The second notice would be in February 21st. To give the board a little bit of wiggle room, I set the following meeting after the second, so March 16th to recommend final versions of the zoning amendment. So they would be able to time to make revisions if anything came out of the public hearing. The select board is going to approve and sign the town meeting warrant on March 29th. The warrant then gets posted in town hall on April 11th. So basically, we have between now and February 2nd to prepare any articles that we want to put forward for this Springs Town meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks, Martha.
So it's two months.
Beautiful, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Shall I take that down?
Thanks.
Sure.
So we basically have three meetings to get our, our end of this lift going. So six weeks, six, eight weeks. That being the case, I think we need to prioritize which are the greatest concerns and which can be handled in the amount of time. There are definitely some projects which are going to be longer term projects and they're going to take maybe to the fall meeting. And so let's kind of prioritize what we have. So let me go back to the agenda, just so I can articulate what's there. On the agenda, we have a revision of solo bylaw, revision of wireless communication, revision of dimensional requirements, housing issues related to the table abuse regulations with also with regards to inclusionary zoning, possible zoning required for green communities designation and other potential zoning amendments, which would be customary home occupation and table abuse revisions. So Larry, I want you to kind of help me with this conversation as to what we think are, are, are public safety issues that we would address first, I think. And what would be the, the heavy lifts and the lifts that we might be able to get across the finish line with regards to this?
Well, I think probably the thing that we're closest to completion is wireless. I mean, we did quite a bit of work on that last year. It might need some tweaking, but and I don't, I don't recall now where we were in terms of location of of the towers. I think there was some discussion about the Triton campus at one point.
Yeah, that was, that was a location that was identified by our consultant as one that he felt would fill the gap in, in that part of town.
Fill the gap as far as down to like the Old Town Hill area?
No, more the, the, the areas in Byfield that don't have as good coverage as some. So the other location that he thought would be good, but could be potentially more problematic would be around the DPW Barn on High Road.
Problematic in what way?
Well, that site isn't really big enough to, if we were to do a tower there, for example, it's not really big enough to accommodate the the setbacks and that kind of thing that are in our bylaw right now. If it were a pole mounted antenna or something like that, that might be sufficient. But I think, I think we'd have to take another closer look at that area.
So there were recommendations and there were a couple of maps that were produced that would help us with that process.
Right.
Was there also one, one part of his recommendations dealt with public space? And let's have that discussion real briefly, Martha.
Yeah. So the other part of this was something that would not be part of the bylaw, but would be something called a granted location that would be essentially granted by the select board for any, you know, any antenna going up within, on public property within the town's right of way. So there, there was, for an example, a proposal to put an antenna on the utility pole down at Plum Island Center. But, you know, there, there's nothing in our, in our bylaws really right now that, that covers that kind of a situation. So that would be the other, the other piece of this that would need to happen.
Is that something that could be put on the town warrant for citizen approval?
It would be, I think it would be, it would be something that go into probably the general bylaws, but that would be something to follow up with council on in terms of exactly what form that takes. But I believe, yes, it would be something to go on the town. But I believe, yes, it would be something to go on the town town meeting warrant.
And was there a location that was suggested for the around the outskirts, you know, down by Old Town Hill that would be appropriate other than the DPW?
I don't think there was anything specifically identified. So that's something else we would have to look at. You know, it might, I don't know, it might have to be a two-stage process where we get the bylaw revised and identify one or two locations and and then continue to to work on identifying others.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, Martha, then if we got, if we got the bylaw amendments changed in terms of any antenna locations, it would be what we have now. We could then come back later and refine it. Do I understand you correctly?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
That I mean, that might be the way to get this thing moving because you know.
Okay.
How old are the other self cell antennas that are located throughout town? And have there been any updates that can boost them to reach out a little bit further without actually erecting anything else in another location?
Unfortunately, I can't really answer that question. I think there have been upgrades and we had modified the bylaw a couple of years ago to to allow certain modifications to be permitted by the building commissioner without having to go through the ZBA for a, you know, a special permit. I haven't talked with Peter to see whether there have been any requests that have come in from him, but the technology is changing all the time. So you know, I would imagine that that the providers would want to to be upgrading their provisions. I think the issue with, you know, sort of the eastern side of Old Town Hill is that the hill itself creates a shadow right between that that part of the eastern part of town and the towers that are along Route one. So
Just trying to examine any
Options.
Absolutely. But I, you know, I think my understanding is that grand of location also could help that if we, you know, can start getting some antenna up on utility poles and things like that, that could also increase the coverage.
Certainly would. And that that would be worth a conversation with town council. I, you may be right. It might require. I mean, the the selectmen have the authority, at least in my experience, to grant locations for those types of towers. I don't recall where their authorities stems from, whether it's something that's already in the general laws or whether it requires a bylaw or town meeting approval of some sort. But I mean, that i- if if we could identify that authority in the in the select board. It's a much easier process than having to go back to town meeting every time you want to put up an antenna, you know?
Right. Absolutely. And I think that's the intention.
Yeah. And it may, maybe it would help in and of itself. Maybe we wouldn't need to worry about some of these other locations. Of course, you have
Does the shadow from Old Town Hill fall in the parameters of the dump or where the solar power is going to go, that there might be an additional room out there to put in a cellphone antenna?
That's a good question. I'd have to take, go back and kind of take a look at the 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 coverage maps that he did. You know, the ones that stick
Existing land and it sits at a higher elevation than a lot of places right in and around the area, but not Old Town Hill. It it might serve the purpose. If it's, I know, I know they've changed the height of the antennas, but you know, it's, it's, it's land that's dedicated to nothing but like the wind and anything else of that nature. It's, it's not it's not agricultural land or anything like that.
Right, right. I mean, I think if if you were to look at that site, probably have to go on the the flat portion because you can't penetrate the cap that's on the on the landfill now and you need, you know, quite a quite a foundation for the towers to, you know, deal with wind load and all of that kind of stuff. So, but that might be.
Take a look at the map.
Yeah, I think take a look at the map and we might need to see if we can get our consultant back in to answer some of these questions as well.
Well, and the landfill has been sitting long enough. You don't, I mean, we don't know if it's settled into a harder surface than it had been originally.
Right. But there's still a cap on top of it that can't be penetrated. That that's why the solar is being set up as it is. It's got a ballasted system, so it's not penetrating the gap. It's all going to be.
Cap material, right?
What I remember from the consult looked like to put one on top of Old Town Hill or something was the best idea because what happens is you shoot over everything around the hill. So
Right, right.
In a lot, I think we'll find after more research too for locations is that the pole mounted will fill a lot of the gaps that are where they needed it, especially down from my own. So
But I know, I know that there is a
Very interesting to me, and I think it's good to know what the elevations are between there, Old Town Hill and any place else that might be considered. Because depending on the elevation of the antenna, it may cover more or less than what you want.
So I think, you know, looking at what we had is we compiled as our list of items that we're going to work on, I think it makes sense that this be a high priority item. We focus energies on that. So continuing along the same discussion, let me just take a peek at the agenda again on our agenda items. So solar bylaw. So the solar bylaw, I, from my perspective, I think it's more of a a longer term project. I don't think it has an immediate need right now. I think a lot of the discussion that came out of that was from the project that happened on Main Street. And now what has extended from that are the guidelines and Martha, help me with the name of the guidelines that the state came up with. And we were kind of waiting to get some direction because they weren't in place before.
Yeah, I mean, it was the new, it was the the smart program.
Right.
And the original draft of that basically said that the incentives would not be granted for solar facilities in certain areas, like on prime agricultural land or prime forest. And a couple of others. And I think the final language is a little bit different, but we were going to use that to help guide our revisions to you know, perhaps prohibit or, you know, at least limit construction of solar fields in those areas.
So from from a perspective of trying to get something together in six weeks, I think this is a much longer term project. So I think this is something that we will continue our efforts on, but I just want to try to prioritize where things fall into place because it does need to be addressed. So dimensional requirements, let's have a little discussion about that. Larry, do you want to start this discussion?
Well, we, we did quite a bit of work on this last year, and I'm sure you remember. And I was very enthusiastic about it initially, but I remember one of the, if you recall, we had a whole laundry list of of limitations, you know, that that these, you know, front yard setback, I think, and I'm doing this from memory now, I could be misspeaking. But one of them, I think, was that the front yard setback had to extend back to a certain point, like maybe it was the front point of the, you know, front side of the dwelling. And we had another example of we borrowed from, I think, maybe Newbury Port, where you had to get a rectangular rectangle of a certain type or size rather had to fit within the within the building area. And then we got one of the iterations of the plans for one oh five High Road when this was under discussion. Actually met all of these requirements that we had under discussion and it still looked the same. So I'm, I'm a little skeptical that we can really find something meaningful. You know, given, given our community. So I don't know when we go from here.
Martha, did you want to do a little research or had you reached out to some other communities or there are other?
I by chance came across something from another community, which seemed to be an interesting way to look at it. So I think it might. What I thought I might do is 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 reach out a little bit and see if there are some we had done, as Larry said, we had done some research previously, and I think we drew on Newbury Port and Groveland. And we looked at Amesbury and a few other communities, which don't really have quite the same. You know, sort of lot configurations and things that we do right now, which kind of complicates the issue. But I think it would be worth doing a little bit of of research and reaching out to some communities and seeing if we can come up with something that seems like a reasonable a reasonable way to look at it. And if so, maybe we can put it forward for for town meeting.
I agree with what you just said, Martha. Even the Newbury Porkhouse beachfront area and things like that, it's apples to oranges as far as the configurations are concerned. You know, they, they they have lesser rules on on lot sizes and things of that nature. And Groveland doesn't have, they have riverfront, but they don't have beachfront. So they don't have marsh front. And I may be looking into like towns like Ipswich and Anasquon and something like that where they're smaller communities and have the same kind of wetlands and beachfront and things. The same, the way, same way that we do that how they're building in their communities.
Right. And you know, some, some of the more rural communities like like Amesbury, a lot of them are, you know, sort of they're, they're already kind of regular rectangular lots or they'll say that it has to, the frontage has to go straight back or something. And that just, you know, that doesn't work for us.
Right. And Amesbury is, you know, the way Amesbury land is, it's the town, the the configuration of the town is set up. It's it's hills and valleys. And, you know, they do have wetlands and all that, but it's a completely different feel than what we have here in Newbury.
So, yeah, so I think it's worth a look. Maybe it's not the highest priority, but if we can possibly do something. Try to move it forward.
Yep. So I think continuing the discussion and having this be more of a long term or a project that we won't try to get on the next, within the next six weeks. But we will continue activity on. So I'm just trying to get trying to prioritize the five or six things that we have before us and what we want to put our energies into over the next few weeks. All right. So we have, we have wireless as a primary. I'm just, I'm just saying primary, secondary, only out of primary being within the next six weeks, secondary being longer term. A lot of mentions as secondary, if and I want people to, I want to, I don't want to just push this through this way. Do you feel that way, George?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Woody?
Yes, I know the time constraints is.
Okay, Leslie?
Yes.
Mary? And Larry, of course.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right. Let me go continue down to see what we have. So a related table of use regulations and inclusionary zones. Martha, do you want to touch base on this for a second or two?
Sure. I think both of these are are items that that really are related to our housing production plan. And I'll start with inclusionary zoning first. That might, that might be something that we could do as not a tremendously heavy lift. Emily's already done some research on that from looking at inclusionary zoning bylaws from other communities. And she actually put together a matrix. And if she were here tonight, I think I might ask her to speak to that if she would be willing. But I think between those things and perhaps some some models that town council could refer us to, we might be able to put something together. And that would be, you know, it's a drop in the bucket, but that might be a way to either you know, create an affordable unit here or there, or get some funds towards you know, towards affordable housing. We don't have an affordable housing trust right now. So that might be something to discuss setting up if we had community preservation funds that would make it a lot easier because I know a lot of trusts have actually funded been funded that way. So that would be kind of a separate conversation, but I think it 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 could be something that would be doable within the timeframe.
So even to have funds be directed, we would have need to have a trust established, which hopefully wouldn't take a lot of energies if models already exist. Is that what I'm kind of hearing?
Well, I think the zoning, the zoning wouldn't be too heavy a lift. It wouldn't take a lot of energy to do that. The housing trust is another
Okay.
It's another thing altogether. And I don't know what other mechanisms there might be actually for for funds, say if a developer didn't want to create an affordable unit, but would provide funds instead. I don't know what what poten- potential mechanisms there are for housing those funds.
Okay. Larry?
Yeah, no, I I agree. I mean, it's this is something that that I'm sure that there've got to be some great examples of this type of bylaw out there and the trust as well. I would anticipate it, there'd just be two companion articles on the town meeting warrant, one to establish a trust and one to establish the the bylaw. So I, I think that's very doable.
Okay.
Within our our time.
Okay.
No further comment. Larry covered it for me very well.
Okay, great. Leslie?
Um, could I just have a really quick? What? How do we refer to customary home occupation?
So that's a little bit further down in the discussion, I think, because
It was above the
There, there are two, two things on on table of use regulation. So that might actually be a little bit confusing.
Yeah.
On the agenda, but we're, I think, right now, we're specifically talking about the housing related things.
Okay. Then I'll hold back.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. Woody?
That sounds good. I think we should, we should try work on the bylaw or have it for Tommy.
Okay, Mary?
I have nothing.
Okay. So, primary, okay. Uh, did you do zoning? Zoning requests for green communities, stretch codes that are already adopted, Martha?
Actually, back up for a minute. I didn't, we didn't really talk about revisions to the table of use regulations related to housing.
Yep.
And in thinking about that and that that goes and sort of relates to the table of use regulations that sound below, maybe it would make most sense to to look at, look at you know, the table as a whole, rather than sort of doing two efforts, one on housing and the other on other things. My thought on that was that perhaps we could at least allow multifamily housing in the Business and Light Industrial District, which we don't right now. And then that might be a simple thing, but it might also be better to propose whatever revisions we think to the table.
I think it makes a lot of sense that, you know, you've already you can combine the two, which is done more often than not in other communities.
So just
Thing and the commercial.
So just for clarification, Martha, the only sections of Byfield that allow multifamily are in in Byfield by the highway?
Yeah, we only, we only allow Yeah, we only, we only allow multifamily housing. Other than multifamily housing created through an OSRD, which is different. But we allow it right now in the, in the Byfield Village Business District. And we allow multifamily housing up to four by special permit. And same in the Upper Green Business District, multi-housing, multifamily housing up to four by special permit. So that's how the church was converted and that's how the Woodbridge School was converted.
Right. Okay. So we'd be looking for maybe other opportunities in town other than those two, those two areas.
Right.
Something like this. Okay.
Right, right.
To allow that possible exploration. Okay. Let me poll. Larry, thoughts?
I just a question, Martha, are, are you? Anticipating that, that we still limit the number of units to four? Or are you thinking that perhaps we could even allow something larger apartment building some sort?
Yeah, I'm thinking perhaps we could allow something larger. You know, the, the limitation might not be the zoning, it could be the soils, you know, the capacity for subject systems and things. But yes, to allow something more than four.
Okay. And is there, I mean, would be asked, asked for justification. At town meeting for this, would there be? Any benefit if we did this towards the creation of affordable units?
Yes. I mean, if they were, you know, rental units. And it was done, you know. Done with that in mind, I think, you know, that, that's, that's really the goal to provide greater diversity in housing, the possibility for affordable units.
Good. Thank you, Larry. George, thoughts?
No comments.
Okay. Woody, thoughts?
No comments. I'm good.
Okay, Leslie, thoughts?
I'm good for now.
Okay, Mary, thoughts?
No.
Okay. So those two components, the. Inclusionary zoning and. A table of use. Now let's talk. About customary housing. Occupations for a couple of seconds.
So the, if I may, the background on this really. Goes to issues that have come up where somebody is trying to. Make a case that what they're doing is a customary home occupation, but it's, it's. A special permit, it's a use that requires a special permit under the table of use regulations. So the thought here was really to put. Just put in a sentence that says if. If a use requires a special permit for the table of use regulations, it cannot be considered a customary home occupation. You know, something just as simple as that. And the building commissioner and I have, have discussed that.
And this would help him out with what he has to do?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, alright. Thoughts, Larry?
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I mean, it, 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 it corrects an ambiguity in the bylaw.
Okay. George?
No, in the days of COVID right now, as we're in. Home occupations might be more useful than not for people. I know there are limitations on number of employees, amount of parking, parking spaces required. But it's certainly something that could be looked at.
Great. Leslie?
Home occupations. From where I stand, because I. Have a business on my property. That. It, you have, we fall into the agricultural residential. Bylaw. And so. You have to go through like a special permit to get approved for doing anything other than that. So that, and, and, and along with what. George just said about so many people working from home and having their businesses from home because of the COVID situation. So I, I look at that and, and think that a lot of people are starting to. Go in the direction of. Doing business from home. And not going out and, and, and renting, you know, an additional brick and mortar type of situation.
So higher priority?
I think it's a higher priority.
Cool. Woody, thoughts?
No, I think it's already been said. So I agree.
Higher priority. Okay, Mary?
Office space, office buildings are going the way of dinosaurs. Good. This is a very important issue that we get on board with whatever communities are advanced in the preservation of their. Of their towns to make sure that people have access to what they need to do. Because you're not going to be renting an office. Most likely.
Okay. All right. So this is helping to identify those things that we're really going to try to push for, for our six week window here. With regards to. Stretch code. Yeah, and. Things that are already adopted with the green communities. Where are we with this, Martha? What's our thoughts on this?
So I think the biggest one really was a stretch code and that's already been adopted. There is a requirement under green communities that the town either have a bylaw which allows. You know, renewable energy by right or allows research and development. And we already have provisions for R and D. So I think it's a matter of just tweaking that language a little bit. It may be good enough as it stands, but I'd like to review that with council. So that's a very light lift to do that.
Okay. So if I have my list correct, we're looking at wireless, inclusionary. Table of use. Customery home. And, and, and stretches are, is our things that we're going to try to hit in the next, next six weeks.
Right, right. Because we, we would like to go for green communities designation if we can. There, there are other things that need to be done, but this is a zoning component.
Okay.
With, excuse me, if I could just interrupt for just a moment on the. Green community, is that a combination of three boards that would be us, CONCOM and the ZBA? As far as. How it would be written up and the bylaw would be updated?
Um, I don't really think so. And the stretch code is, is, is on the books already. And then I think it's really just a minor amendment to. Language in our table of use regulations, if, if, if that's even needed. So. And the green communities really is, is a state designation if we, if we qualify or get designated as a green community. We are then eligible for, for funding related to energy uses. And, you know, we'd get probably about $130,000 or so just for being designated. So it's not really something that's related to, you know, any, any board or any combination of boards once we get designation. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. That being the case, so we have our, we have our, our primary, our, our topics that we want to work on in the next six weeks. So let's just talk for a couple of seconds about how, what, what sort of shape that's going to take. In our last meeting, we, we're talking about doing work groups of three. And then we wanted to touch base. Thank you, Larry, for recommending, touch base with council with regards to that. And the understanding is that if we are designate, if we're directing even a work group to do something for. A board and Martha, correct me if I misquote this, that, that requires a public notice posting as an open meeting. And so what we need to do is we just need to have these meetings posted $48 beforehand so that we can meet that threshold. Is that, do they have that right, Martha?
Um, that's right. I mean, these work groups that we talked about would essentially be subcommittees because they are making recommendations to a body, which will then take action. On, on things that were, are within their jurisdiction. So as a subcommittee, they do need to be treated. You know, they need to adhere to the open meeting law.
Okay. Um, do we want to run down or do we want to see who has interest? We kind of did this on our last, our last meeting. I'm sorry, were you going to say something, Mary?
I, I just wondered, um, so is two, two constitutes a meeting?
Yeah, well, the thing is, they're being, we're, we're a subcommittee, we're assigning a subcommittee from the board. To do something to report back to the board. And as the law states, if they're reporting back to the board with an assignment, then it has to meet the threshold of an open meeting.
Okay.
Even, even if it's two.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we're directing or appointing a subcommittee.
It will then make recommendations to the entire planning board for potential action.
Right. But wouldn't the planning board then be the decider? As opposed to having all be available to the public, the whole discussion then has to be available?
Yeah. Our discussion would just, yeah, our discussion would just be. Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, so that's probably going to require meeting in between our meetings, you know, so. If we have, you know, potentially, you know, six weeks between now and then, that's three meetings. So we're going to be meeting or breaking into smaller groups. Martha, do, do I have the tab right of four? Or projects?
One, two, three, four. Actually, I've got five. But some, some of them really don't rise to the level of, of needing a subcommittee, I think.
Okay, so the stuff that can be done administratively can be done administratively and just then brought back to us?
I think so, yes.
Okay, all right. So then that brings us down to three and the three are. The wireless communication. Table of use.
Well, that kind of depends. I mean, if we're looking really just adding a use of multifamily and business like industrial, unless. You know, unless somebody wants to do, you know, some, some research on parameters for that, but. That's, I think, probably pretty simple.
Okay, so then that brings us to customary?
And that's just in, well. Well, that's a question. Actually, I think the, the original intention was just to, to, as Larry said. Address an ambiguity right now.
Yeah.
By just stating simply that any, any use that requires a special permit cannot be considered a customary home occupation. It will need to get that special permit. That said, if there are, you know, other provisions of the customary home occupation that. People want to look at, that it might be worth it. You know, in, in light of the discussion that we just had about COVID and more and more people working from home. You know, the original intention of the, of customary home occupation, I think, was really to allow things like professional offices, an attorney or an architect or. You know, somebody like that working from, from home. But that doesn't necessarily meet, meet sort of current requirements.
Okay. So the. That sounds like language then.
So, so that's, that's language. I mean, it could be as simple as what we talked about, adding a sentence about special permit. But if, you know, if there's interest in. Looking at modification, maybe that would end up being a longer term project. So we deal with the ambiguity first, but.
I think that probably, Larry, that probably hits the, the, the issue at hand. And then for a long term, we, then we figure out what we want to do with that.
Yeah, well, I, now that, after hearing everyone's comments, it raises some. You know, concern, we don't want to. I mean, there, there might be some types of customary home occupation that beyond a certain level require a special permit. But you know, like if you have more than two employees, something like that, I think we just need to be careful about that, that type of thing.
Right, you know, I think.
We may not want to just have a blanket rule.
But it's referring, I think the idea was to refer specifically to the uses that are already outlined in our table of use regulations. And, you know, we're dealing with a case right now where the use requires a special permit, but. It's being argued that it's a customary home occupation. So it's just, it basically is trying to clarify. You know, and.
I know, I, I think it's the right thing to do. I'm just saying, you know, we want to be careful. The devil could be in the details.
Right, right.
We might want to just be careful with the wording, that's all. You know?
So that being the case, it looks like wireless is going to need to have some discussion with a, with a work, with a work group or subcommittee.
Yeah.
Yeah, inclusionary. With insight from stuff that's already been done by Emily, probably would benefit from a, a work group activity.
Would or would not be?
Would, I think, would. The customary home occupation, it sounds like it's, it's a cleaning up of language, Larry. That probably could be handled, you know, with insight from, you know, council and, you know, your insight perhaps and, and, and staff. So we do long-term, I think we do customary, the long-term components of customary housing to figure out what, what makes sense. Because that, that's important. So I think that we're down to two subcommittees then. To, to, to handle other stuff that's going to need energy by, to come back to the, come back to the planning board in a couple of weeks.
Right, for town, for town meeting, yeah.
Right, right, right. So again, we're trying to streamline, identify what we want to do in the next six weeks. To achieve town meeting. So wireless communication, I think will, will bless you. Will, will be our, our goal and the secondary. Okay, that being the case, Martha, do we want to pick a date now for, to try to, to gather and assemble? Because our next meeting is going to be, our next meeting will be.
The fifteenth.
Right, right. And that being the case, we want to probably meet somewhere in between that. Does a meeting during the day on the. Eighth make sense? Does that give us enough time to put, pull some things together?
Yeah, I think it probably would. I'm just pulling up my calendar here. So I think for the wireless, what needs to happen, we have, we have a draft which is. Not entirely in clean form. So what I would like to do is to get that cleaned up to. You know, to provide to whoever is going to be working on the subcommittee to review. You know, take that as a jumping off point and sort of figure out, figure out what else needs to be done to get this over to finish line.
Okay. Uh, so then I guess we, we, I, we can do this one of two ways. We can just ask for, you know, folks that they have an interest to participate on that meeting on the eighth, or we can assign people to do that. Is there a feeling of going either way?
I think assignment's good.
You like it?
This is for the wireless now, right?
Yeah, I like that, Mary. You jumped right in with assignment.
Sounds like a volunteer to me.
I, I saw her hand right up in the air. Thank you, Larry.
Go, Mary.
Okay. So who else? That's right, on jumping into wireless.
Right.
Woody?
I'm interested.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll go for it.
Okay, so there we go. It'll be Mary, Leslie, Woody. Martha and I will meet on the eighth. If that works, we'll, we'll determine the time. We know where the location is going to be. And we'll get out the draft, the previous draft, Martha, and if we can maybe tie me it up. We'll probably need access to the maps. And I don't know what else. And he had a summary recommendation too, I think, didn't he?
Um, I think so. I've got it. I've got it all. So what I will do is send everything that I have out to everybody.
Okay.
And I'll send it to the entire board in case there's, you know, other, other comments and it will be posted. So if somebody else wants to sit in, that's fine too.
Sorry, Pete, the time.
We don't have the time yet. Martha's checking her calendar. Does a morning work better?
Yeah, I think morning might work better.
Okay. Do we want to?
Early.
Okay, do we want to try like a nine AM or?
Nine thirty.
Would you go for eleven? No.
All right, let's, let's go for nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty on the eighth. Okay. Um, and.
That's going to be.
That's going to be a town hall or are we going to zoom?
We're going to zoom.
I think we're going to zoom.
We're going to zoom. We are zoomers because Mary's still going to be in her jammies and I don't want to, you know.
Just put a regular shirt on at the top. Nobody else can see the rest.
She's in my jammies.
Okay, and do we want to have this, do we want to have the other subcommittee working around the same timeframe? Because I'm looking at you, Larry.
Uh, this is, this is for
The inclusionary.
Inclusionary, yeah, no, I can do that. Are you talking about the eighth speed? I'm tied up in the morning on the eighth. But I don't know if you wouldn't necessarily want two meetings on one day anyway.
Do we want to look at the, does the ninth work? Yeah, Larry.
Yeah, actually, it's a great day for me. I'm wide open.
The ninth, Martha, how's that look for you?
That's fine for me. The only thing I have is the ZB A meeting at, at night and that's
So if we
On the ninth, I'd say the third.
This was a special one for the pink, the pink house.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, and the Fan Daddy thing was also continued to the ninth.
That's right, I recall now.
We want to do morning? Does that, would that work again?
Anytime for me on, on the ninth is, is.
Okay, Martha, I'm looking through you.
Martha's convenience.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to say nine or nine thirty?
Sure, which one works better for you?
Either's fine with me. Larry, it's usually after nine is better for you. Do you want to say?
I don't know. That's my, one day I don't have to take the grandkids, so nine o'clock works fine.
All right, that's nine o'clock then.
Nine o'clock, cool. Um, and the, we materials distributed and at least we have these two steering committees, if you will, work groups working on this to then come back to, to report back to us for the fifteenth. And we'll probably keep that model going so we can keep this thing in, in active motion. Because that's the only way we're going to get it done is to do some lifting now. But these aren't items that don't have previous work already facilitated with them and, you know, once we, you know, get, get to this point, get to that point, then we can focus in on some of these other projects that are going to be longer term projects and are going to require energies. Cool. All right, I'm glad that we had the opportunity to have that discussion. About that. Uh, any, any questions or concerns or, or follow up to any of that kind of conversation we just had? For anyone?
Not related to that, but I'd like to mention something else. If this is the right time. And I'm kind of shooting from the hip here because this occurred to me as I was sitting here, you know, at the meeting. But, you know, we had the the issue of, with 105 High Road with the condominium and review and, and all of that because it didn't fit into the it didn't fit into the definition of a subdivision, nor did it fit into the definition of a, of a project subject site plan review. What an easy, simple fix be, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, to simply amend the site plan review bylaw to include condominiums created under the OSRD? Rather than try to get too, too exotic?
So spin that, spin that one and do it in a low speed, Larry.
Okay. Would it make sense to deal with that loophole, loophole, if you will, in our OSRD bylaw? To, to simply amend the site plan review bylaw? To provide that any condominiums created under the OSRD would be subject to site plan review? Rather than having, go ahead, Martha.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, yes, just include that under applicability at that.
Right.
That might make sense. I think it might make sense also to put some sort of a cross reference in the OSRD.
Sure, sure, absolutely. I mean, that would be, I, I've, I've been thinking all along, you know, trying to come up with these, you know, ways to incorporate subdivision control into the OSRD bylaw and it's, it's, it's a clumsy way to approach it. And maybe the, maybe, uh, you know, the simpler is the better, you know, less is more.
Okay.
It would be certainly be a very easy bylaw to, you know, a, a town meeting article to craft.
Would you like to have Martha reach out to council to see if that would be something or that has been followed in other communities or something that we should explore?
If Martha's willing, I think that'd be good idea. I mean, it's, it's a simple, quick fix. If it doesn't work in the long run, well, we can always come back and look at it again, you know. But right now, we've got this glaring loophole in our bylaw.
Exposure.
Yeah, and, and
You want to call it medicine.
And all of the things we would have looked at under subdivision control or site plan review, we had to build that into the decision. Where really that the model of the OSRD bylaw is more or less a two step process, as you know. You know, first you, you look to see if the OSRD makes sense, then you go on to the more technical review. So, just a thought.
Good thought.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll, I'll reach out to council and get some, some feedback on that.
Thank you, Larry.
Like, like I said, I mean, we, we could, we could draft that warrant article in, you know, twenty minutes. I mean, there'd be nothing to it.
Um, any other planning board projects or ideas that we want to think of as, as, as far as long term projects?
Well, we've, we've touched on, on the master plan, which needs to be completed and that is, that is a long term project, but it's also, you know, a high priority project to get done, so.
It's a high priority project. I have so many people approach me and ask me what's going on with the master plan and how it's going to be completed. And, uh, you know, I really don't know what to say to them at this point.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what we're trying to sort out is really the best way to complete it. I did find out that the consultant who had worked with us is no longer doing master planning work, so will, will be looking for, for alternatives there, but we still need to develop this scope of work for what needs to be done to to complete it. So that's, that's, that's the first step.
All right, um, okay, then we'll continue on the, our agenda and we're at the Drew Planning Director's Report.
Not, not too much to report really. Just a reminder, we do have the, the solar project on the landfill public hearing opening at the next meeting on the fifteenth. So that's been noticed in the paper and all of that. We are expecting that night also to get the application for the Parker River Environmental Studies building, the site plan review modification, including the dock. And it looks like we're also going to get a couple of ANRs that night, so you know, things are, things are beginning to pick up again a little bit.
Okay, cool. Um, ZB A. So the select board.
Oh, you're looking at the liaison reports?
Yeah. Um. What, Ashley, Martha, you had the most information on what regarded the planning board as far as the select board was concerned and they kind of again jumped around a little bit.
Yeah, that, well, I can, I can speak to the discussion that I had with, with the board, basically, my, my little piece of it, which was we have been looking for funding to complete the design and permitting of the small section that goes from the Parker River, the Parker Street, Clipper City Rail Trail head there down to the municipal boundary. And we had gotten a grant from Coastal Trails Coalition of $10,000 to put towards that. We had been hoping to get mass trails funding for it. The project was a very strong one, but it didn't quite, they had an enormous amount of applications, so it didn't quite rise to that level, but we have Coastal Trails is, is going to be receiving some additional funds and they have basically will be offering that to the town in the form of a grant to complete the permitting and design for that section. And then we're going to go look for funding for the construction of that. It's about 375 feet, but
Right, it's really a small footprint.
It's a small footprint, but they're still looking at $712 per linear foot for construction. So the costs add up. There's some flagging and, and that kind of stuff that needs to be done. So basically, my request to the select board was to ask them to, to basically accept the grant from Coastal Trails Coalition, which they did. So this will be moving forward.
And that was probably the most poignant discussion as far as the planning board was concerned that evening.
Right.
Yeah, so that's about it. Well, nope, that's, that's pretty much it. All of it. That, no more to go on.
Okay, um, anything from ZB A, Larry?
Yeah, um, the last meeting, they did take up the pink house and as Martha mentioned earlier, they are holding a special meeting to review the decision. I don't think they technically voted to approve it, but they voted to ask town council to draft a decision approving it. So gives you a pretty good idea where they're going with it and they're going to take that up. What would you say, Martha, the ninth, I think?
Um, yeah, they're taking it up on the ninth. Actually, I, I drafted the decision and sent it on to town council who has made some added to it and it's being yes. So it will be taken up by the, the ZB A at the next meeting.
I even, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that, that's fine. So the hearing was actually continued. It wasn't closed.
Right, right. Uh, even if approved, as it, as it seems it's going to be, it's, it's still going to be a while before we see anything, I think, on a Form A approval not required. Because I think they have to go out now and find someone who donate land to do a land swap with the, with the federal government and, uh, I don't know.
The, the butter is a Colby, correct?
I think so, yeah. They have the plant in front of me.
Yeah, that's one of the butters, Fish and Wildlife, but it's at the Colby. It was Bob, Bob Colby or his heirs at this point about it.
Yeah. So I, I guess the, the whole issue is, it's rather complicated. And Martha, you may know more, I'm sure you know more about it than I do. But apparently, for whatever reason, fish and wildlife cannot sell the lot, but they can do a land swap. So they have to find someone who's willing to donate land for this purpose. And it may be months, if not longer, you know, before we actually see an A and R.
Federally owned that particular spot?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, it's owned by US Fish and Wildlife. And, and the issue is that they can do a swap, but it has to be a swap of, of basically equivalent monetary value. So, you know, if you're looking at, say, a building lot with a house on it versus some number of acres of marshland and stuff, but, um, you know, the idea is that the swap will, will
Equivalent value.
It'll be of equivalent value and it will be land that will further Fish and Wildlife's mission.
Yeah, so they, I mean, they're getting approval from the ZB A is an important step, but they still have a long way to go, I think.
But A lot of moving, a lot of moving parts, but.
Well, the, it, this discussion will continue onward. Would there be stipulations on how, if that, if they do go forward with the swap, that the pink house could be locked into a protective?
Yeah, there would be a present, one of the conditions will be that there will be a preservation restriction on the house. You know, which, which is the intention?
Yeah.
I, I think initially what they'll do is they'll, they'll take it in the name of the nonprofit organization, which will then look for a buyer, private buyer, who'll take the house subject to all these covenants, you know, whole slew of covenants to basically protect it. But, so interesting.
Yeah.
All right, um, thank you, Larry. Um, I'm trying to think, oh, anything from conservation that was pertinent? And I don't think that there is regarding the planning board. I don't think there is. And if there is, I will bring it back to us on our next meeting. Um, NVPC.
Most of the, the last commissioner's meeting was really, you know, sort of gen, general business. They did go over personnel, things with recommend, they've done a, a personnel review with recommendations for increases in salary and that kind of stuff. But I think, you know, I think really, you know, they're all, they're, they're all just doing a tremendous job for us, so. But there were no special speakers or anything particularly pertaining to the planning board on, at this meeting.
Okay, cool. All right. Does anyone have anything else?
Let's see, we do have, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at them, but there are the meeting minutes for January twentieth.
Right, I think those came out yesterday and I haven't had a chance to go through them depth. I did a quick Okay. I appreciate Emily putting those minutes, minutes together. If everybody could kind of take a look at those and closer detail for our next meeting, then we can get those approved. That would be wonderful. Thank you very much, Em. And, okay. Anything else?
Sorry, Pete, I'm, I'm wondering, Martha, for doing all the work on, on the minutes and, um, you know, that's a lot of work. I mean, I scanned it. I didn't drill down there, but, yeah. Lot going on. So thank you very much.
It's a, it's, it's a combined effort because Emily, Emily really has drafted them and then I, I, I go through them.
Well, team effort.
Yes, team, definitely.
Good team. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Well, everyone, I want to thank you very much and I look forward to us meeting on the eighth at nine thirty and on the ninth at nine o'clock so that we can kind of get these other items, uh, hopefully to town meeting in six weeks or in the process. So they can be on this week's, this spring ballot. And I'm not going to say Conservation Commission or Historical Commission, George.
Say Commission.
Commission. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion at this point in time?
Some mood.
Oh, okay. I think it's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Oh, okay, great. And, and discussion on the motion, Larry?
Uh, no discussion.
No discussion, any discussion, George?
No discussion.
Uh, Leslie, any discussion?
None.
Uh, Woody, any discussion?
No.
Excellent. And Mary, any discussion? Okay, on the motion, how do you vote there, Larry?
Yes.
Well, thank you. George, how do you vote?
Absolutely, yes.
Wonderful. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Beautiful. Woody?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Thank you. All right.
Absolutely, yes.
Beautiful, beautiful. Martha, thank you very much. Thank everyone for being here and we'll see you shortly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Night, all.
Good night, George. Night, everybody.
Night, George. Night, Martha.